I probably won't get all my Christmas lights up at my house this year.
Yeah, look at the crowd.
So sorry, everyone. I got caught up in a discussion with Grant.
All right. Keep the crowd waiting.
Welcome. Yeah. Welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and stand and pray, please.
All right, would you join me in prayer? Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the great city of Harrison. God, thank you for these positions you have put us in. God, we recognize that we are servants. We're here to represent the people. And God, give us wisdom as we do business, as we conduct ourselves with integrity. And God, just guide us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Do you want to be in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bob, this has got to be a record. What's going on?
Bob Lindsey, I'm listening.
Well, we want somebody to observe this on this spot.
Yeah, well, thanks for coming.
Thanks for keeping us on this spot.
This may be one of the shortest meetings we've had in a year and a half. So, well, let's go ahead and get started.
I don't have a thing.
Maybe shorter than that.
Well, it's always quiet.
Yeah. Is Mitch here? Mitch!
Hey.
Hey, Mitch.
How are you doing, Mayor?
Well, you've kind of moved on us.
Yes, yes. Different seat.
You've got to have something.
Chris, you might come in this far, can't we, Chris?
Luke is still working on it for July. We've same report as June for now, but he didn't want to make a mention of a couple of things in regard to sales tax. So, I'll wait for him to get in here. While we're waiting on him, I will point out there's something that we're going to take care of that he brought to my attention. Although, we did vote to approve the actual budget vote approving last year, 2019, where I would have to adjust the budget. It doesn't appear that it is anywhere in the minutes. So, we're going to have to re-vote on that at the next council meeting. So, no need, any discussion other than that. It's a housekeeping function. I do remember, I told him, we did do it. I remember us voting on it.
Okay. So, Luke will know what to bring us up to date on.
Right. And so, I told him, I said, I was prepared so that we have the figures for everybody to review again so that we can do that. In addition, before, like I say, he comes back in to discuss it, I wanted to make mention of, this is a little bit out of bounds, but since I have the floor, if you don't mind. Yesterday, at the groundbreaking ceremony, something that I noticed and I wanted to point out, and I don't know whether it was you, Mr. Mayor, or somebody else that had mentioned to you, but the comments about Caitlin and Sonette, and it was carried on KY3, I think if anybody backs up, that is a better example of our community than anything else. The fact that we're able to recognize somebody that doesn't need, you know, that's not from this community that just comes in, that we've grown to really care about.
You know what, Mitch? I went home an hour ago to change clothes, like I always do, and my wife brought to my attention that that's on Facebook, that Caitlin thanked us, and there were so many comments, and my wife was telling me how great we are. And you know what I said to her? That's who we are.
That's who we are.
And that's exactly what you just said. That is great.
That is a better representation of Harrison, Arkansas than anything.
Absolutely.
That happens on a weekly or monthly or daily basis in this community.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I, like I say, take that time. If you don't mind, then we'll.
And Luke ever gets here.
Well, he's trying to help me.
He's been here a while.
Yeah, he's been here a while, but he's trying to help me with this. So, in any event, we're waiting on him. So, we'll move on. If you don't mind, we'll come back to it.
No, no. He's been back there for.
He's been here since.
The whole time, man.
He's knocking on me. There you go. Sorry.
I actually did put out financial statements about five minutes ago. So, they are out there, ready to go. Nothing really alarming. Sales tax, again, great numbers. As we continue forward, we're going to, hopefully, that's going to continue, and also be cautious that it may change. So, not a whole lot. I did want to bring up, you know how I've done the fund differences, kind of where we're at compared to where we were budgeted to be at this time? And I'm just pleased to say that all of our funds are ahead of where we were budget-wise. That's a testament to all of our department heads who have watched their expenses and to the fact that our revenues are continuing to climb. So, again, not much really to point out, but I did want to bring that up and just let you know they are out there now and hit those high points that everybody's doing a great job.
Absolutely. The budget deficit compared to actual, the budget deficit is 296, we're right now sitting at 159.
Wow!
If we can continue that trend, we hopefully will end up at a net zero, which is kind of the end goal right now. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed, and we had that $190,000 budget deficit, and if we can hit zero, we'll be really doing something. So, great job to everybody that's had a hand in that. One other thing, are we in department reports?
Yeah, yeah, we're with finance.
One thing I did want to bring up, we've been for a long time, and I know the mayor's really been pushing to get this done, but we have finally accessed what we call a leak detection service. So, we actually are able to see hourly and daily readings from our computers now of everybody's water bill. And we've also have a report now that shows who may have, may or may not have a leak, whether that be a toilet, something running in the yard, a hose left on. And as of about 3:00 this afternoon, we had determined there's about 270 in the city, but we are going to start contacting those people. I know the mayor has really wanted to do that going forward, really get out in front of these leaks so we can start telling these people, hey, you've got something, you may want to look into it. We've always been reactive, and we're finally to the point, it's been, you know, four or five years in the making, but we're finding that, finally to that point that we can be proactive and notify everybody. So, with that being said, we are going to put some stuff in the water bills, requesting people give us their contact information for that very purpose. We want to be able to contact them if they have something. We can call them up and say, hey, you may check this. We noticed a bunch today had about four to five gallons per hour. Now, that doesn't seem like a whole lot, but whenever you multiply that over every hour of every day of every month, it adds up very quickly.
What he means is it's constant for 24 hours. So, that tells us there's a problem.
I can tell you, it goes up pretty good if it's just constant from 11 to 1 to 7.
Yeah, yeah. We've noticed that, and unfortunately, you know, we haven't had this capability to do it in the past, but we've been working towards that goal, and we're finally there. So, we're really excited about it.
You got it done. You're right. It's been, every month, there's a handful of people that come to our office irate because they owe $1,000, and it's because of a leak. But now, we can at least call them, and rather than a thousand, it may be 100 and a half or something like that. It'll prevent, hopefully, that's our goal, to prevent the big numbers.
And it'll take us a while to get that 270 down to a more acceptable number. You're always going to have something. You'll probably always have 10 to 20 every day. It'll, that'll pop up. It just happens. With toilets and hoses and everything else, sprinkler systems, there's always something. So, but hopefully, we can get those people contacted as soon as possible and prevent those large bills. It also prevents a lot of write-off that we do as well, so.
Some more long showers, is what you're saying.
Not 24 hours long, at least.
24 hours, okay.
Anything else, Luke? We've got a pretty light night, so if you want to.
Only other thing was just thank everybody for coming yesterday. Appreciate it. Great turnout. I thought we had, I don't know, probably 60 to 70 people there, so it was great to see everybody.
Luke and Jeff kind of handled the logistics of everything, kind of like Bob usually does, but Bob's with the chamber, so they were able to do that, and I didn't have to worry about that. So, we appreciated that. Bob and I were at a ribbon cutting about 10 minutes before, so.
Yeah. We got a lot of good pictures that are coming in, and I know we've got the drone footage from the police department.
Yeah, I didn't know that was a drone. Did you all know we had a drone?
Yeah, we heard it. You could hear it.
Oh, really? I can't hear.
Well, it was loud highway.
I had no idea.
Thanks to the chamber.
Ethan, I knew it.
For live streaming as well. Appreciate the gaird breaking. I don't know if you saw that or not.
We had that, but we did live stream that, and there were over 500 people watching.
I'll be darned.
So, nothing but good comments. I talked to Davis Construction today, happened to see them in passing, and they said they've had a lot of great comments about it as well, so.
Yeah. I think being local, too, is very important. We've been able to achieve that. It was great.
Like I said, huge step, so. Thank you, guys.
It did, it was on Channel 3, 5:00.
Yeah, yeah. The Caitlin deal was cool. And I don't know if you all heard, but Ethan, who was on Channel 3, he covered the fact that I think the mayor asked if we could have a reporter like Caitlin, and he made a positive comment toward that. So, let's keep our fingers crossed. We know how important that's been to our community.
She has been fantastic in representing Harrison in her favorable light.
Yeah, exactly. Most of the time, most of the time, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all in favor.
Okay, Mitch. Linda, are you with us tonight? I know she's bound to be.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Hi there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am here.
Okay.
I have nothing on my committee.
Anything else you want to talk about? No?
Um, no. The brown brake breaking was great yesterday. I was very impressed with our turnout, and I'm excited about the new safety building, as I know you all are as well.
All right. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Oh, well, under that, Linda, we have Parks and Rec becoming a city department. That's on there mainly, and I know Chuck's with us tonight. He might want to talk a little bit, but we are possibly, depending on what they decide, we might come back to you at council meeting for a first reading of three.
Okay.
Chuck?
I hear you, can you hear?
Yeah.
Yes. We're having a special meeting next Monday on the 14th at 4:00 at the East End, and then we're moving our regular scheduled monthly meeting to the 21st of the month to try to get both meetings in before the regular council meeting. When I have an open discussion for things about moving it under the city and how the advisory committee will work under the city and those kinds of discussions.
All right. Yep. Okay.
That's important.
Chuck is being quarantined right now, so. How's it going, Chuck?
Don't get it.
Good.
Don't get it. It's not fun, but safe to come first.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Mary Jean? The Sixers?
Yes, I do have something. I never want our downtown area to look like it did five years ago. And it's that time of year that we have to have money to upgrade and replace the bulbs. Bulbs do burn out, and part of the new strand downtown, and we have to rent a forklift. And we also have a proposed decoration of a large tree, which is in addition, and we need $5,192.50 for this year. And that will bring us back into replacing the bulbs and the upgrades that we need and possibly lighting a nice tree, nice big tree. But there is maintenance always, and this is something that is going to be ongoing, and our businesses have had a bad year, and our city is doing quite well. And this benefits all of us, so I would like to take this to city council for approval. And this money would be budgeted in a separate budget, and all bills would come to the city to be paid directly to, by the city.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move it on.
Move it on.
And I appreciate.
Will that come in finance?
I beg your pardon.
Will that be a finance issue at council?
Uh, yeah, I guess it would, wouldn't it, Luke? Yeah, it would need to go to finance. Mary Jean, so will, you can sell it, but Mitchell covering.
Mitch and Luke have to find me the money.
Well, what I would ask is, we need a little bit of background on where, who's, who the vendors are, and who's going to be responsible as far as the spend of this money. Are you going to handle it, or is there a group?
Rick Schoenberg will be doing the work, and that's free labor. And there isn't, there isn't any cost to his labor.
Okay, okay.
And the, there is a vendor to list for the, for the bulbs and stuff.
Okay.
But any of those invoices would come directly to the city for payment, because Rick never wants to touch the money. He just wants, he does a good job of doing the work.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it, though. Thank you all, because I do like Christmas lights.
Who doesn't? Glenn's shaking his head. Okay, Chris?
You got anything? Nothing in my community tonight. Sir? I'd just like, I would like to mention, though, that I've had several people ask me about Rock Springs Road.
Yes.
And it being torn up, and I did get with Wade on that, and he said that as soon as they get done with the overlay on 65, that they would, that would be next on the list for Jernigan to take care of.
We were told next week.
Next week.
But that, but he is correct. They're done with that, they're going to move over. I was hoping, I even called them, hoping we could get them to do our little patch first.
Yeah.
Because it's tough, and there's a lot of traffic out there.
Yeah, there is.
Lot of traffic.
And that's been down since July the 4th.
I know.
I know when it went down.
I remember that day.
I broke through.
But it, we'll get it done next week, so.
That's all I have.
Hopefully. Okay, I guess we're down to Bill, which is waiting tonight.
I didn't pass, I remember doing this, so we'll get through this real quick here. First thing we're going to be looking at is an old business, is the business licensing and the third reading. What I always like to do is just look around at the committee and ask you if you've had any body contacting since the second reading that may change what we need to do in the third reading.
No, I, you as chair, I will tell you, I mentioned this to Mr. Fox over the last time. We've been through this discussion enough. I don't know that, even if somebody had a, just a fun discussion now, it's been a full, almost a year since we've been discussing this.
But always, it's good to find out if somebody has something negative out there, and I like to go that way. And then, the new business is the ordinance that we returned to committee from council meeting last month on the engine braking ordinance for the city of Harrison. And we're going to bring it back up, and if you remember the council meeting, the issue about it being a muffled engine brake was spoken of, and that's why we brought it back to committee to talk about it. And I'm just going to lay it out there, and we're going to discuss whether we want to stay with the original engine compression brake, or if we want to change something in it that we spoke about earlier.
I didn't really understand what he was talking about, to be honest. As it stood, the, the ordinance that Grant drew up for us last month, I thought it was fine, other than it had the word jake braking. We'd probably need to strike that from it, take that out, and I, in my opinion, that one's good to go.
If we changed anything on the ordinance, Grant would have to rewrite the ordinance in itself. And since we had the council meeting, I've been talking to some of the truckers and the diesel mechanics, trying to find out what they were talking about as far as muffled engine brakes. And they said that particular statement probably would not do us any good to have an ordinance that said that, because it would demand law enforcement or someone to start inspecting these trucks. And guys, our police department aren't highway police, so they're not going to be able to do that.
No.
And I think if we stick with, my personal feeling is, I think if we stick with this ordinance the way council has given it to us, I think we will be better off in that situation.
I agree. And our current, the current version of what we're looking at does not make, it doesn't say jake brake, it says an engine brake, correct?
It says jake brake down in the body of the.
It's, it's got, says in practice, is an engine compression brake is commonly referred to as a jake brake, which, to me, that could probably be in there. It all depends on probably who's looking at it.
Well, and we received, I guess today, I don't know if any of the rest of you have had a chance to check your email, we received eight attachments to look at, and I briefly went through them. I don't want to confuse this issue a lot. My statement in being involved in an industry that uses heavy equipment, if you have an engine brake and it's used properly, and it's correctly installed, you'll never know that you're using it.
You don't have to have it muffled, it's just a money.
So, the difference is, those individuals that are using them inaccurately, or inappropriately, I should say, are doing that because of the noise, either they like that noise or whatever, or it's not properly being used.
And they're going to continue to do it. Once they're done, they're probably going to continue to do it.
So, I don't know what the signs would say, or how that would affect, but to be honest with you, knowing drivers, they said they will continue to use them until such time, because, again, if they use it, you'll never know it, if they use it correctly.
Right.
Very much like you gearing down a four-wheel drive truck, it's on a camper, but if you've got an orange muffler or whatever, you're going to hear it. You don't?
Absolutely.
They're not going to hear it.
Is that going to be okay left in there like that?
I think if we just take out the word, it just slipped by me. I, it was my intention to avoid the use of jake brake at all, and it just, it was buried in the middle when I was drafting, and I didn't catch it. But it would be better to take it out, and it won't affect the words. I can email a new copy, if whatever council decides, if they decide to pass it on without that, I can literally delete two words and send it back to council, so that's what turns up to go.
So, the primary concern of this is engine noise, correct?
Right.
Is there any noise ordinance that already applies that were in the case that Chief Grady has mentioned, that there are already laws on the, on the Arkansas books that would take care of this?
What's going to be on the Arkansas books is basically a defective exhaust system. And it circumvents the jake brake a lot. It would be better to have this right here, because they've got more to work with with this ordinance than they probably do with the state law. And I think we need to go ahead and do this.
Okay, then I will make a motion to move it on to council with the exception that the jake brake references removed from the ordinance.
Second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion of second to move it on to council as it is written here, except for the one direction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so.
Now, could we, we have any discussion from the audience?
Well, we only have one person back there, and he didn't, he's winning right now, so he's probably going to stay silent.
Okay, then I'm good.
Yeah.
And when I read it, I might hear what it says.
And the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Why don't we just give him a copy later?
Yes.
When it's, when it's complete.
Here you go, come here, Glenn. This here would be marked out right here.
Do you have one copy there?
I don't need it. I've got a new copy on my computer.
We really need to do this, because they wake Glenn up at 7:30 in the morning some mornings, so I'm concerned about his beauty sleep.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you've been out there the two, after Labor Day, I'll tell you what them trucks come down through there, I think they're just trying to do it, get by with it.
I put a note out there that said Glenn's involved in this, right there.
That's right. That's what I thought.
All right, the next and probably the last thing, I think, that Bill had on the agenda was the bid waiver ordinance. And what this is, if you don't know, is Wade has requested an ordinance to waive competitive bidding.
Counselor and Cohen?
Yes.
You got a gentleman from the remote audience that would like to speak to the council about the engine brake.
Okay, we can do that.
Good.
Arkansas statute 2737-601, I can read this up to the committee or committees would like me to.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and read it. The Arkansas statute reads, "Infractures can be used as a foundation for muscle ordinance." Every motor vehicle shall at all times be equipped with a factory-built muffler or one duplicating factory certification in good working order and in constant operation to prevent excessive or unusual noise and annoying smoke. And then, part B of that says, "No person shall use on a motor vehicle upon the public roads, highways, streets, or alleys of the state, nor shall any person sell, foreuse on a motor vehicle upon the public roads, highways, streets, or alleys of the state, a muffler other than a defined, other than a defined subsection A of that section, cut out, bypass, similar device, or any type of device which produces excessive or unusual noise or smoke." And then, to go on, then maybe a second or subsequent ordinance that requires vehicles that use engine or compression brakes be equipped with a muffler in accordance with said potential ordinance or statute. I did find that Silent Springs and Corning, both of Arkansas have ordinance that makes use of the term unmuffled engine brakes, and Silent Springs in particular does have signs that say unmuffled engine brakes prohibited. And the last one I wanted to mention, but this probably would only be used if the police were to use sound level testing, but the EPA does allow levels of truck noise, all truck noise, which would increase up to 80 decibels on the, on the A-band, whatever the, whatever the town meter is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else still?
That's it.
Okay. All right, now, back to the waive competitive bidding ordinance. Wade sent a note here, and I don't know whether you've seen any of this yet, but I'm just going to read what he put. Ordinance to waive competitive bidding for necessary repairs to the Arrow Mod belt filter press at the wastewater treatment plant. The following two quotes were received from the belt press manufacturer, Arrow Mod. The first one is for an auger pump replacement, which is $31,941.25. Second one is a belt replacement for $6,970.81. Total cost of repairs will be $38,912.06. No budget adjustment is requested for this, sufficient funds are available. And in the ordinance, he lists that. And the one thing he put in the ordinance that I'm glad that Grant got in there, it says, "Whereas parts and equipment necessary are proprietary to the belt press manufacturer and wastewater treatment facility staff are of the opinion that repair services provided by the equipment manufacturer will provide the highest quality and extend the life of the equipment." So, Wade has asked for this bid waiver so he can purchase this from this particular dealer.
Make a motion to send this to council.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so. Okay, Mayor, that's the last one I've got.
Wow, we're moving along pretty good. I see Wade's with us tonight. You got anything to add, Wade? About anything?
I think we've got a council, county, county, well.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we generally don't have.
We don't need any more Wade.
We don't have a meeting without Wade and Luke speaking, so.
I'm sure.
So, I see Grady's still there. How you doing, Chief Grady? Yeah, says he's there. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. I've got a few things I'll share.
You're fine, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, good. We're talking about coronavirus. If you all have been watching, and this is something Wade monitors daily, two things have happened over the last two weeks. The state has done a much better job. I mean, they're throwing numbers out there daily of 300, 300, 300, rather than 8, 9, and 10. But Boone County is not. We have moved up drastically. Two, three weeks ago, we were down to, we were going down on the active count, and we got to a low of 25 here in Boone County. We're now up to 109 of active cases here in Boone County. So, and what's causing this? I think a lot of what we're seeing there are groups, large groups. It was obvious we had a nursing home that was affected in that two-week period, and probably some other groups. But, you know, I think throughout the community, I think these are being worn pretty regular out there. You know, you go in Walmart, or Walgreens, any of these stores, and you see them everywhere now. So, I think we've been doing about as good as we can do there. And the state, obviously, I'm hoping, because I was a proponent of these, I'm hoping that it kind of is pretty clear that these are a vaccine. Isn't that what we heard today? They got a vaccine, it's called a mask? But, but the state, really, it's pretty obvious, something has happened about two weeks ago with the state. And so that'll eventually get around to us. So, anything we can do in that regard is, you know, the better. Obviously, we've had something with the school system, sounds like they've handled it very well. I know Dr. Pratt and the, you know, the amount of preparation, the whole school system has went.
I will make a comment, since you bring it up. The general public cannot possibly understand how difficult it is in this environment for teachers and staff. They have done an incredible job, and the main thing that they do is the safety of those individuals, those students, is at the forefront of every decision they make. So even though, as it was shown in KY3, that there are 120 or so kindergarteners sent home, to our knowledge, none of them have tested positive, and it's all out of precaution, out of safety.
Right.
So, I think they, I can't tell the council enough how proud they should be of our school district and how they've handled these things.
Absolutely. Another thing that we can start to think about, I had asked department heads, anyway, that we wait until we break ground before we start talking about this building, because I knew we'd have a year and a half. So, I guess that needs to be discussed going forward. So if anybody comes up, council members, if you have here of any brilliant ideas for this wonderful building, you know, you might want to bring them forward. We met last week with a group of veterans that are looking for a place for veterans, so, you know, a kind of consolidation of all the veteran organizations into one. And so that might be an opportunity. I think we need to look at anything and everything, and what's best for the community. I'm hoping we can do something to add to the flow of downtown. I have, I'm very optimistic about downtown, with the things that we have going, the future of the area. I think downtown's going to be a hopping place.
Well, to that point, could I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Be pleased to.
I think some of us have received communication, or emails, or letters from individuals making statements about downtown and other things. In one of the publications that we always receive, and I meant to bring it tonight, and I didn't, I didn't bring it into council, about different projects in Arkansas, in there, there's, one of the authors, one of the stories is from Harrison, Arkansas. Matthew Penny, I believe, was his name? And they talk about the different things in Arkansas, and the different things that are being built. I know that our last project that we proposed from the city didn't pass.
Right.
Regardless of the reason, everybody needs to be cognizant, you know, Pine Bluff has just opened a $12 million aquatic center.
Yeah.
You know, all the places that we spoke of with rec centers and rec flexes when we were having the discussion, we need to understand that we may not agree with everything, but our community's going to change. You don't have to be 100% on board with everything, but you can't say no every time. And this community is going to change, just like everywhere in the world. You have to manage that growth and manage that change.
Well, good. In a minute, I'd like to ask Bob to maybe talk about the upcoming survey. I know I'm hitting you cold on that one, but if you can share anything on that, that kind of plays into what Mitch was talking about. The other thing I'm going to start doing, hopefully, you know, you all say you're going to get up and exercise more, and most of us don't, but I'm going to start walking Harrison. It's something that Mayor Rick in Batesville does, and over a couple of years, he's close to walking the whole town. So, I'm going to, I'm going to give that a shot, and hopefully we can, that'll be a good thing. But, you know, we also noticed the geese have come back, but they're not on the grass, as far as I can tell. I haven't seen them on the grass. They're back in the water, and hopefully that's short-lived. As far as I'm concerned, they can stay in the water, you know? It's the grass that, you know, that was a problem. So, we've got a lot of great things to look forward to, really, really do. Bob, would you like to say a few words?
I'll be happy to do that, Mayor, thank you. A couple of things, actually, that I was going to mention. The first, the survey. You'll recall back in March, the first week in March, Harrison was selected as one of four communities in the state of Arkansas to receive a community grant from University of Central Arkansas and their Community and Economic Development Group. It will allow us for a year-plus to identify small projects and complete those, part of a community redevelopment effort, one of only five communities in the state to receive that, worth several hundred thousand dollars. We're excited about that, but of course, a week later, along comes COVID. We are going to do some, we're not going to wait. We've got approval from UCA and their Community Development Institute to do some online training on a process called strategic doing, different than strategic planning. Strategic planning is long-range. Strategic doing is near-term, quick efforts, easy to accomplish. And one of the first efforts we intend to take, undertake, with this group of trained individuals, about a dozen, will, we believe, be a community survey for needs and desires of the community from a quality-of-life standpoint. So, we're going to be excited to do that, looking at probably the first or second week in October to have a four-hour training session. Several of you will be asked to probably participate. Once the training is done, we'll actually begin the process. Our goal is to have a survey done, the first step in the community grant, to have a survey done before the end of the year. Item number two, I've been working for about a week with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. Harrison is on a short list from an out-of-state business to locate a small business warehouse distribution facility, 10 to 12 employees. A short list with two other communities in the state, and today we just learned that they, on their own, the business out of state, had actually identified three properties in Harrison without us or the AEDC knowing that. Two of those three properties were no longer available. We're not sure when they got them. We've identified two additional properties and provided them to them, to the AEDC. So we're on a short list, not gigantic, but 10 to 12 jobs and a business reload, are expanding into the state of Arkansas, is really, really great information. And we'll keep you apprised of that. We, AEDC hopes to learn something within the next week to 10 days. And then, I forgot what the third thing was, but it was going to be important, and I'll (laugh).
It was the best for last.
It was, it was the best for last. We are starting our Leader Cast program. This is the Global Conference on Leadership. We have 90-plus people signed up for the program over a 10-week period, all on video, rather than, 90% of the groups in the, around the globe went to a video program. We're doing ours, one speaker over, for 10 weeks, and it's a really exciting program. It's leadership at its best. And we're excited to start that next Monday. I've asked Jeff to put me on the schedule for your October council meeting to present the third quarter economic development report, and we're going to be excited to do that. Any questions for me? Thanks.
I don't think so, Bob. Thank you. One other thing I want to mention before we close tonight is, I am going to have the opportunity, and I really am looking forward to this, of having a video call with Dr. Bernice King, Martin Luther King's daughter. And myself and Lane, along with DeSean Scarborough, all out of Little Rock, are going to spend an hour with her. And we received questions today that she will be asking me about various things about Harrison. And, you know, we've kind of been in the spotlight lately, so I think this might be able to help. We'll do all we can in that manner. Because of that, I've been aware of this last couple of months, I've been studying a lot about Martin Luther King and his daughter, and maybe some of the Black Lives Matter things, and been learning quite a bit. I wish I would have done, done this about six months ago, but there's a lot to learn there. And there's a lot of misinformation, as you would guess with anything out there today. So, the more we can learn, the better. But I'm really, really looking forward to that. So she was supposed to be here in person, but due to COVID, didn't make it, but we'll, we'll be doing this. Right now, it's set for October 22nd, and I hope I was allowed to announce it tonight, because really something I'm excited about. All right.
Is Wade still with us?
Wade is, I'm not seeing him. Yeah, he is.
Yes. Wade, this Wade, where are we at with the We're Project and everything that's going on down the creek? We hadn't heard anything recently about it.
They're moving forward with the preliminary design. I'm hoping to have something to show next month. I know, I met with a couple other people probably about a month and a half to two months ago, as they were getting started with some field, collecting field data, and they've been moving forward with it. And so hopefully, hopefully I've got something to show you at one of the meetings in October.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, that's taking a little longer than we expected, but that does suppose to come to a head next month, and hopefully we'll get some good information.
I have one thing I'd like to mention. Tomorrow is observation of the 9/11, and there will be a short memorial service at the fire station. It will not be a very long one because of the, of the virus, but...
9:30, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, 9:30.
9:30.
And it's always such an impressive ceremony. It is, but it will be a very short and condensed ceremony compared to our previous ones. But that is tomorrow.
Okay. Esther, did you?
Well, yeah, just, I was going to say, a couple weeks ago, I had an African-American guy that was here.
Good.
And he was trying to get to Jonesboro, and he said, "Everyone was wonderful here." He goes, "I've heard all about this town," but he goes, "It's not true."
It's not true.
I said, "I know it's not." So I helped him, as much as I wanted to do the selfie and put it on Facebook, you know, I helped him get down the road, but he said how wonderful everybody's been. He was here three days, and, you know, churches helped him out, got him food, bought, you know, got him a hotel, got him down the road.
Yeah.
It's just, it just, that stuff doesn't sell.
The first church, rich as a church.
That's the way we are. That's the way we are. That's who we are.
That's who we are.
And she is swag, and her husband.
That's great.
Good slogan, that's who we are. That's who we are.
Yep.
Yes.
Anyway, so I'll share that.
Motion to adjourn.
You've got it. Let's all go home.
Let's go. She's got it. Oh, 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 oh!
Wait, wait a minute.
Oh, oh!
Take it back.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if you all can see this. When I was digging through all the stuff last week, this was City Hall that we were going to build.
Wow.
As you can see, it's missing a piece.
Yep.
Isn't that a cool piece?
Wow.
Wow! Now, share something else with you, Bob. 1954, City Hall, Harrison Chamber of Commerce was located right here.
Yes, sir.
With us. I thought that was cool.
It's when it started.
Is that when it started?
It is.
We also had Mayor Ralston. I'll have to look, look at him.
Guy. Guy Ralston.
Mr. Ralston was the mayor during the construction, during one part, and he died in an automobile accident while he was in office. And the city clerk took over as mayor.
Wow.
Yeah, how about that? I just thought that was some...
He's saying, Jerry?
Yeah, interesting stuff.
Yeah, right there.
Yes.
That's him. Good-looking guy, huh?
I told you to pick out the best looking one, it would be him.
Every time they have a building project, it's a good-looking mayor. Uh-oh.
Before you do, I remember the one thing. What is it? Hey, we just got awarded, you and I got a call yesterday, from the Northwest Economic Development District, one of five communities that are going to receive a retail academy training session. This is from a national organization called Retail Strategies. It is to plan the future for small business in the community, one of only five in the state, and Harrison got it. We're working on some dates right now through the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. Exciting for our small business team, and when you mentioned downtown, Mayor Gene, it made me think of it. It's going to focus on downtown and any small business. It's a great program, and Jerry and I are excited about being able to do it.
I don't know if you all saw my mouse.
Yeah.
Going home? Football, football-minded America.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to see that picture.
I didn't want to break it up in here.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, yeah. Wasn't that cool? I mean, it's our City Hall, just with a tower. Obviously, they ran out of money, but...
Yeah, it was going to be on this end.
Yeah.